I was wondering how it's going. Not that it used to like. It's always. It's the whole actual way to talk. There's a lot of great things to see here. Just together. It's like. I mean. I mean. That's what this game seems like. Last time it is. And I want to say this. It's all. And then. It's. It's involved in. It's like. I'm usually on the air. I'm usually on the air. You should have a lot. You need to be on. What do you mean? I'm listening. I mean. I'm just. I mean. That's what this game seems like. Last time it is. And then. I want to say this. It's all. And then. It's. 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 It's involved in. It's like. I'm trying to make a good choice. I love. I'm usually on the air. 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 Outside. 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 Always going. I'm usually on the air. 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 I don't like it. I'm doing. I can't even tell you. I didn't say anything like. I'm not a player. 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 Okay, I miss that. I miss that. I think there would have been these high school deals. They just. I would play for them. I would play for them. I'm going down there. 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 If I knew about the big guy. Yeah. Yeah, I've got my. I'm. 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 We have a lot of questions. 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 Where are you? I know. I can put you down there if you want to ask your. Yes. 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 I get my. It's a little past six thirty, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the May eighth, two thousand and twenty-five for Sales Midway Woodford County Planning Commission meeting to order. If you would all stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and evergreen. Would you give the roll call, please? Patty here?
Here.
Rich Shine?
Here.
Randall O'Hannon? Chris Sharp?
Here.
Tim Middleton?
Here.
Ashley Bridge?
Here.
Chad Wells?
Here.
Floyd Green?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kim. Commissioner?
Oh, Whitney, sorry. Whitney Steph. Here.
We have two sets of minutes in our pocket. The first is April tenth and April seventeen this year. One was a special meeting that we called. If you all had a chance to look at those, anyone's prepared to make a motion to accept?
Someone with an attorney.
Have a motion to accept or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. We have two items under our public hearing this evening. Item number one is the Sales Midway Woodford County Planning Commission has filed a zoning ordinance text amendment relating to Articles two and seven of the Sales Midway Woodford County zoning ordinance. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you. Problem seems odd when we have this item first and we have a pretty big public hearing and obviously it's item number two. But I promise this won't take long and we moved it first for a reason because we're gonna just give you kind of a general overview of what this is and the staff is gonna recommend maybe we table this. Very similar to what we did with the short-term rental language when we amended Article five. We just wanna present it to you in a general summary form and our recommendation would be that we table it and let this thing sit over a few months and then we just bring public comments in over the whole summer possibly if that's what we need to do. Maybe two months, maybe three. There may be people that wanna give comments tonight since this wasn't advertised item, but I'm just gonna give you a summary and this has to do with the In-Family Convoyance Amendment going forward. So what's on the screen here and you're not gonna be able to see that very well, but I'll just give you a little quick backstory. This amendment is the one we did in December, December nineteenth for Articles two and seven, and it was fairly broad. If you remember, we were looking at the In-Family Convoyance, we were looking at the Ag Zone, A1, A2, A4, CO1, and RR, and we sent it to the fiscal court. Fiscal court looked at that over a few months and they rejected that text amendment. Most of the rejection had to do with the way we chose to approach the amendment to the In-Family Convoyance language. So they rejected it and then basically, you know, a little more backstory if you remember in the fall of twenty-three, we started talking about this and we asked the county for a moratorium. That was rejected and they basically said figure out a solution and send it to us. Well, that's what we did in December and then it was rejected and interesting enough, then the court really got into discussing this and they came up with a directive back to us on what they want in the In-Family Convoyance going forward. That's what's up on the screen right there. That is not in your package, so I'm gonna show it to you in the format that it would be in Article seven. But the court spent several months here, or four months, basically saying we want the language to read this way going forward for In-Family Convoyance. And that's the recommendation. So they voted six to two to send us these bullets and then they also had a second vote, seven to one, that we consider a conditional use permit option for this type of use. We did both in the draft that's in your package. So with that, I'm gonna go through this really quick. Through Articles two and seven, and again, you guys can ask me questions, but we're gonna suggest just introducing this item and then we would table it and we would just kinda let this thing. I'm glad to answer any questions, but you know, I know we got another case here where a lot of folks are here to talk to us about. Um, there may be people here that have an opinion on this right now, but I think the idea was we table this, come back in June, if people wanna talk about it, we'll pull it off the table every month. Someone wants to give us comments, we'll do it just like we did the short-term rental. If you remember, I think we let it sit three or four months and then we've kinda, no more comments and we were good with the language. We took some action and sent it back to the court and said this. So the advisory committee met on this on May first and looked at it, uh, debated some stuff, but then again, we got a pretty solid directive from the fiscal court on what they want in this provision, so we didn't, uh, mess with it much. We pretty much just left it as they requested. Glad to answer any questions about that if you guys have.
Do you need a motion to?
Do you think, do you think anybody's here to say?
I'm gonna ask, and I did not, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the hearing. Did anybody come to speak on this particular issue? Okay.
That's what we figured.
Yeah. So do we need a motion to, it's your own call, that would be our recommendation to table this.
I'll move the table list to next one.
Thank you. Motion to a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we should be true of these bands?
Yeah. True. I could agree.
Yeah, so, and then you guys can study on this a little bit more and direct to any questions they have. If you guys have any questions.
Okay, the second item on the, uh, public hearing items is a public hearing that was opened and postponed from the prior meeting. And that's Vision Engineering LLC has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing twenty-two point five acres. And that's located at fourteen seventy Troy Pike here in Versailles. The requested zone change is from agriculture A-one to high-density residential R-four. Do you have anything, Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go through this before. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Um, my name's Chris Sharp. I did attend the public forum meeting, meeting a couple of weeks ago when Mr. Laney called with the, uh, some of the HOA's residents. Um, there has been some concerns voiced to me over whether or not that may or may not have been appropriate. Uh, so at this time, what I would do is either of the parties that would be involved with this, whether it be the applicant for item number two or anyone on the, uh, planning zone commission that feels that I need to remove myself from this, uh, I would be more than happy. I think that's the appropriate thing to do at this time.
Scott, do you have the applicant? We have no concerns.
Thank you. Commissioners? Very good, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
All right. I was gonna start off with a story about having a birthday party when I was younger and put the sign out and nobody showed up to let you know how effective these zoning signs are now. Your own apartment, or even get crap, but I'll just leave that off there. Um, they work. Um, so what you see up on the screen, we'll start with that. That's some aerials of the, the property, um, on the right, as you kinda look, moving up Troy Pike, heading towards town, we see just some aerial shots there of the property. I think everyone's pretty familiar with this property is on the corner of old, uh, Dry Ridge and Troy Pike. Um, so there's the aerial property we'll talk about here in just a second in more detail. Hopefully everybody can see the screen in the back and then you guys can see it, this is typically what we would show at any meeting. Um, as you know, we had this application last month and then it was tabled. Um, it has changed pretty dramatically. The staff report is almost exactly the same that you all saw last month. I highlighted a couple of things in red on the staff report, what was revised, one is just today's date. Most of, all of this was in the staff report last month, as you remember, we really didn't get into that before the case was postponed. So I'll go through this typically how I would, uh, fairly quickly, because I know a lot of people are here to speak on this case. So we had an application filed on March twentieth, twenty twenty-five by Vision Engineering LLC. The property's located at fourteen seventy Troy Pike, it's twenty-two and a half acres. It's currently zoned agriculture or A-one. There's the zoning map right there that shows you the property is zoned agriculture or A-one. Uh, the proposed zoning is R-four, high-density. The existing land use is a commercial, uh, businesses there as well as a big chunk of property is vacant. Uh, the middle of page one, you can see the existing land uses comprise mostly a single-family, uh, some institutional uses like the schools, cemetery, and vacant land uses. The land use district is a contemporary neighborhood district in the conference of plan, we'll get into that in just a second. In the bottom of page one of your staff report, as interesting, there was a traffic impact study submitted with this application, which is now a requirement in the zoning ordinance after our last text amendment. Pages two through four of your staff report, get into our conference of plan to review the goals, objectives, that the staff feel are relevant for a case of this nature. They're outlined on page two, three, and four. When you get to the bottom of page four, chapter five of our conference of plan outlines eleven general development policies that are applicable to every zone change review that you guys see. Those policies are outlined on page five and six of the staff report. I won't go into those in detail, those are the area-wide policies because the applicant has submitted a fairly long, uh, conference of plan justification statement that's later in the staff report and we'll leave that for them to explain to you how they comply or don't comply with these, uh, area-wide policies. Um, when we get to page eight of the, six of the staff report, uh, by the way, before I go there, there's a zoomed-out shot of the zoning map on the screen. I know I'm going fast, but, um, the blue dot shows you the property there and again, it shows it's ag, but then you can start to see lots of zones, uh, in the general regions. You see single-family zones, you see commercial zones, you see ag zones, uh, you see some R-two. Um, I would note that some of the things, like for example, across the street where the Shire is, which are condominium units, those aren't zoned single-family, but they were done under PUD thresholds. But under today's zoning, you'd have to zone to R-three or R-four to do those. The PUD, as you remember, was used in mixed-use development, um, and flexible things in zoning, uh, projects. That was removed from the zoning ordinance at the direction of the city a couple of years back. So we no longer have PUD zoning, but to do anything attached to townhomes, condominiums, that you have to go to a multi-family zone going forward to be able to do attached single-family. So the applicant is proposing detached single-family units as well as attached, uh, single-family townhomes. And that, the, the high-density zoning was needed because the PUD is no longer a tool in the zoning ordinance to do attached single-family. Um, going forward, this is the land use map that's at the bottom of page six. There's a lot of people here, we've got a lot of comments on websites and calls and letters. I, I, I would just wanna point out a couple of things specifically for this hearing that I think you guys know, but just kinda, just set the general tone. This is our land use map, some people call it a future land use map, this is in the conference of plan. This is figure twenty-three of our current conference of plan and it shows two things. It shows the urban service boundary. We do work under what's called an urban service boundary concept. It's mirrored off Lexington and other big cities. And in that concept, that our conference of plan's general premise is in the urban service boundary, we have urban services, we have growth, we have projects, and outside the urban service boundary, we have rural uses, ag uses, and we're somewhat trying to make an attempt to preserve farmland. But in the urban service boundary, as you can see, every inch of the urban service boundary has a land use programmed on it of something. Going back, I double-checked this, this land use designation, contemporary neighborhood, which is a residential flex zone, has been in the conference of plan. I went back and looked at eighteen, the two thousand and eleven, the two thousand and five, and nineteen ninety-seven, and even the nineteen seventy-seven conference of plan had this property programmed as residential for the future. So that's our future land use map or land use district map in the conference of plan. And this, this property is designated contemporary neighborhood district. This is a zoomed-in shot of that, you can see everything down here in the south side of town, this contemporary neighborhood, foot transitions to the parkway and we get into more commercial and industrial zones. Um, page seven of your staff report, again, are unique to the contemporary neighborhood district, there are the general policies and the infrastructure policies. Um, the, the conference of plan, contemporary neighborhood district, I'll just read a couple of sentences from it. It says, "This district is intended to encompass neighborhoods in which were developed after nineteen sixty-eight, areas within the urban service boundary that should be developed as neighborhoods." It goes on to say, "New neighborhoods may be designed in the various ways to provide city and county residents with a variety of housing options." So again, this is contemporary neighborhood, uh, that the applicant is proposing the zone change request on. Get to page eight of the staff report, we start to look at the zoning ordinance requirements when the zone change is submitted. Article four, the zoning ordinance, section four oh nine point three, talks about what's required in an application. Uh, right below that on page eight, it talks about a demonstration of appropriateness that has to come in with the zone change. And interestingly enough, that mirrors the state law. The applicant has to show either how this applies with the conference of plan or in absence of that, has two other options. The applicant has filed an application to show they do comply with the conference of plan under the state law and our zoning ordinance, um, and that's the type of, of review you guys are looking at tonight. You get to page nine of the staff report and that's where it starts to talk about what a development plan is, which is what's up on the screen right now. This is the applicant's general development plan. Five requires a traffic study, which was submitted, uh, with this application. Number two shows if you're doing greater than fifty units, you have to do a traffic study. That is new language in the zoning ordinance with the last amendment, traffic studies are required when you meet those thresholds. Bottom of page nine, we start to talk about what a development plan is intended to do, I won't go through that. Um, and then when you get to page ten of the staff report, we start to look about how general development plans are binding on our parties. So again, this is a general development plan where the applicant's showing you a conceptual layout, showing you lots, roads, open spaces, and then there's a narrative there on the right that are detailed conditions, which are binding on the applicant if this zone change, for example, was approved, conditioned on those. Um, the general development plan verbiage is all on page ten. Get to page eleven, we'll right back to this exhibit up here and that's what's different from the prior meeting. I, I'll just show this exhibit again, just as a reference point, this was the exhibit that was in your packet last month. It showed two hundred and twenty-seven units, apartments, single-family and townhomes. Uh, the applicant then had a neighborhood meeting that you heard a little brief about a couple of weeks back, I believe. And after that neighborhood meeting, this general development plan was filed in our office as a substitute development plan. Um, and I'll let them go through the details of that, you're looking at eighty-some lots, some townhomes, there's still a phase line there, the blue line is a phase line. What the applicant is proposing is that the townhomes and a handful of the single-family units would be developed first. And the development plan condition says until the turn lanes build or the roads improve, there'd be no development in the phase two until there were traffic improvements out on Troy Pike. So that is the submitted general development plan, which by the way, can be amended here on the floor, conditions can be added or subtracted, wordsmith, whatnot, uh, through the negotiation of a public hearing under the provisions of the zoning ordinance. And again, that is the old plan that is now void, I just wanted to put it up there for reference. This is the applicant's general development plan, I won't read, I said there was fifteen, there's twelve items there, I'm sorry, the old one had fifteen in it, but this gets real specific. So this, this is how, under the zoning ordinance amendment, we've done, how we're moving forward with general development plans as opposed to the old preliminary development plans. You've got a conceptual layout here, showing drainage and open space and roads, and then you have detailed conditions, very similar to what the Board of Adjustments would see, where the applicant is making conditions that are very specific about, in this case, turn lanes and eight-foot wide path, um, different things they're committing to with this development that would be binding on this developer if this thing would move forward to an approval. So it's a combination of a conceptual exhibit with detailed conditions and the applicant has a way to sort of go heavy one side or the other. Talks about fire improvement, uh, utilities, underground utilities. Again, these are all in your packet on page twelve, we blew those up, general development plan, so you could see them a little easier. And that's what's up on the screen right now. So those are binding with this property if it's approved going forward. After that, I'm, I'm promise I'm almost done, we get to page thirteen, all the way through to, the applicant submitted a very detailed narrative that goes all the way to page twenty-four, from thirteen to twenty-four, I won't go through that, so they can get up there and tell you how they think this complies with conference of plan and what their, uh, finding suggestions are. That's in your staff report. You get to page twenty-five, we're right back to the zoning ordinance on, uh, how it, uh, lays out what's allowed in the R-four zone. Again, the applicants have requested R-four zoning, which is high-density, um, and initially they proposed a combination of apartments, single-family and townhomes, but this latest draft is just townhomes along Troy Pike and the rest of, that's the old plan, and the rest of the development is all single-family detached, kind of traditional, uh, residential development. And that's what's allowed in R-four, you have the ability to do kind of single-family townhomes, dormitory, childcare centers, and multi-family duplexes, twin homes. All of those things are allowed in R-four, but the applicant is committed by way of this plan to just doing townhomes and, uh, single-family detached dwellings. Lot sizes at the bottom of twenty-five, lot coverage on twenty-six, density, the maximum density of R-four is, um, sixteen units to the acre, they're showing about three, just attached and under four units to the acre, which is in line with our single-family zones. I think it's three point eight six units to the acre is the proposed density that you see on this twenty-two and a half acres, which comes out less than four units to the acre. And as you know, our single-family zones are basically four units to the acre. Um, it may be denser than some stuff around it, but it's in line with our single-family residential standard. Page twenty-seven of your staff report are just other review items, uh, as a catch-all, food, service, water, sewer, et cetera, and a traffic study was submitted. Page twenty-eight, twenty-nine are the provisions of the zoning ordinance on how you all make your findings, uh, what the state law says for a zone change request, how you make your findings. I think it's important to note on page twenty-nine, um, as you all know, the state law is very specific on the zoning map amendment. Planning commission has to find that the, that the proposal meets the conference of plan and then it has an or and gives you two other options that really- how we're moving forward with general development plans as opposed to the old preliminary development plans. You've got a conceptual layout here, showing drainage and open space and roads. And then you have detailed conditions, very similar to what the Board of Adjustments would see, where the applicant is making conditions that are very specific about, in this case, turn lanes and eight-foot wide path, different things they're committing to with this development that would be binding on this developer if this thing would move forward to an approval. So it's a combination of a conceptual exhibit with detailed conditions. And the applicant has a way to sort of go heavy one side or the other. Talks about fire improvement, utilities, underground utilities. Again, these are all in your packet on page 12. We blew those up, general development plan, so you could see them a little easier. And that's what's up on the screen right now. So those are binding with this property if it's approved going forward. After that, I promise I'm almost done. When you get to page 13, all the way through to, the applicant submitted a very detailed narrative that goes all the way to page 24, from 13 to 24. I won't go through that, so they can get up there and tell you how they think this complies with the comprehensive plan and what their finding suggestions are. That's in your staff report. Get to page 25, we're right back to the zoning ordinance on how it lays out what's allowed in the R4 zone. Again, the applicants have requested R4 zoning, which is high-density. And initially, they proposed a combination of apartments, single-family and townhomes. But this latest draft is just townhomes along Troy Pike, and the rest of, that's the old plan. And the rest of the development is all single-family detached, kind of traditional residential development. And that's what's allowed in R4. You have the ability to do kind of single-family townhomes, dormitory, childcare centers, and multifamily duplexes, twin homes. All of those things are allowed in R4. But the applicant is committed by way of this plan to just doing townhomes and single-family detached dwellings. Lot sizes at the bottom of 25, lot coverage on 26. Density, the maximum density of R4 is 16 units to the acre. They're showing about three just attached and under four units to the acre, which is in line with our single-family zones. I think it's 3.86 units to the acre is the proposed density that you see on this 22 and a half acres, which comes out less than four units to the acre. And as you know, our single-family zones are basically four units to the acre. It may be denser than some stuff around it, but it's in line with our single-family residential standard. Page 27 of your staff report are just other review items as a catch-all. Water, sewer, et cetera, and a traffic study was submitted. Page 28, 29 are the provisions of the zoning ordinance on how you all make your findings, what the state law says for a zone change request, how you make your findings. I think it's important to note on page 29, as you all know, the state law is very specific on the zoning map amendment. Planning Commission has to find that the proposal meets the comprehensive plan. And then it has an or and gives you two other options that really aren't applicable in this situation. So there's three ways the planning commission can make a finding on the zone change, and they're outlined in CARAS 10213. And clearly, it's mostly about the comprehensive plan. So the applicant has to show you how they meet it, and folks in opposition have to show you how they don't meet it. Your focus is compliance with the comprehensive plan that's currently adopted for this community. Cookie cutter motions on page 30, up or down? As you guys know, we put those in every staff report. And then on this end with the traffic study was turned in. I want to point out, this is the third traffic study that the staff has seen for the south side of Forsales. There was a city commission traffic study that was done that looked at kind of a max build-out scenario on the south side of town of all these projects ever were built. Then we had a project that Dennis Anderson brought to us with some development plans. They did a traffic study, we got another look at traffic since that first study. And then this applicant submitted the traffic study dated March 25. That was revised when they changed their plan. So they initially did the traffic study with their first proposal. They had to revise it when they scaled it back. They did study the school and all the things we have happening in the community now. So the traffic study's in your packet. It's pretty detailed. It does have some recommendations in there on page nine of the traffic study. And those recommendations are the biggest one, which is a 220-foot left-hand turn lane into the site has been rolled into their conditions on that development plan, under their Phase Two development. So again, the traffic study's in the packet, and it's pretty detailed. And I'll let these guys talk through it when they get there. So that's everything I have, unless you all have any questions for me. And when folks get up here, I'll be glad to put whatever slide up that anyone wants to see that was in the staff report. With that, I'll probably just put it back on the development plan as a static spot. And as folks get up here, if they need me to move to a different slide, I would like to. The planning commission has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Hunter concerning this? Hearing none, are we ready to move on? There's so many people in the room, I would ask that be sure your cell phone is silenced. And if somebody's up here speaking, we need to keep the background noise to a very minimum because it's difficult for us. We want to concentrate on what the speaker says, and we want to be able to hear everything he says. And if there's a lot of, or she says, and if there's a lot of background noise, that sometimes makes it difficult and it's distracting. So I just ask that you be respectful and allow us to be able to hear everything that's said. The way this is going to run is the applicant's attorney has 15 minutes to present. Then we will open this up to individuals to speak. They will have five minutes each. And then at the end, the applicant's attorney will have some closing comments to make. If at any time commissioners, you need a break, I got a feeling this is going to be a long meeting, just let me know, and we'll take a break. We'll do the best we can to get through this as quickly and as respectfully as we can. Mr. Schudie?
Can you all hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, commission members, thank you all for the time and effort putting this together and being willing to listen to us and allowing us an opportunity to meet with these neighbors and talk to them and see what their concerns were and go back to drawing board. My name's Scott Schudie. I'm here representing the applicant, Vision Engineering. With me is Mr. Jahad Alani, the owner of Vision Engineering, as well as Mark McIntosh, who performed the traffic impact study. We're here to answer any questions you all may have. If it comes up during my presentation, stop me, we'll answer your questions while we can. Like Steve had mentioned, I just want to reiterate a couple of things that he said during his presentation that I think are very important to this application. Since 1977, Forsales and Woodford County have asked for this piece of property to be residential. 1977. So there are no surprises. This does not come out of nowhere. This has been planned for and asked for by you all through your comp plans, the same of which was just recently approved. And again, reiterate that this should be the Contemporary Neighborhood District. In addition, like Steve mentioned, we originally filed this application and it showed apartment complexes on this property. I was retained before that last hearing. We showed up at that hearing and realized that there's quite a bit of outcry about that issue. People wanting to have their voices heard and to discuss it. So at that time, we asked for postponement. We set a meeting at Simmons Elementary School, the gymnasium. We had 150, 200 people there. We listened to everybody's comments for about two hours. And as a result of that process, that's how we got to this plan. So we pulled all of the apartment complexes from the plan. While Steve talked about some of the conditions that are on the development plan, in our supplemental justification, there are four additional conditions that we're willing to accept and provide as proposed conditions to this approval of screening. What we believe those conditions will provide is a little bit of security that you're not going to see a different plan. You're not going to see a different plan that is drastically different than what you see on the screen tonight. We're providing density caps that says at no point in time, unless they come back to you all and you change your mind and decide to change those conditions, can you exceed the number of lots that we show on this plan. So what that means is that if anybody ever bought this property from Vision Engineering or a subsequent developer ever came in, they would be stuck to this plan and they would be stuck to our density caps that we're providing tonight, unless and until they filed a new application and explained what drastic changes have happened in the area that entitled them to remove those conditions. So that is done on our basis, we believe, to provide security that, again, what you see tonight is what we ultimately want to develop. As you'll see on this plan, it's a pretty unique one. There's some issues on this property that make it difficult to develop. There's obviously the large pond on the bottom part of the development, and there's a large green space that we provided through the middle of the property. What we think this does is it provides an opportunity to have these new homes built at a price range that is not readily available in Woodford County. We believe that this green space will incorporate it to make it feel like Hensley Place, to make it feel like Rose Ridge. But it will not be $800,000, $600,000 homes. There is a missing market in Woodford County for that 200 to 600 level of house. Not everybody can afford $800,000 houses their first purchase. So what we're looking to do to provide is that middle-income housing stock that Woodford County needs. In addition to this plan, there's, the applicant is proposing sidewalks that will act as walk-in trails that are, he's proposing twice the size of the regulated sidewalks. So again, this will feel like a community, it'll feel like a walkable neighborhood. In addition, there's a proposed walkway around the pond area that will connect with the existing walkway on Old Drive Ridge. That's adding to the comp plan's goals of including pedestrian-friendly developments. I won't bore you with too terribly much of the comp plan and its specific directives, but there's a couple of provisions that I'd like to just reiterate. The Contemporary Neighborhood District is designed for areas of undeveloped land within the urban service boundary that should be developed as neighborhoods. Again, since 1977, that's what this is asked for. This is what the applicant has provided. This property has been inside the urban service boundary and still is. The issue that people are having is that it's ag right now. The way in which you protect your true ag property outside of the urban service boundary is developing inside the urban service boundary. That's why you put that boundary in place, so you prevent sprawl and you identify areas where you want these developments to go. And that's what this development is proposing. The Contemporary Neighborhood District also provides that new neighborhoods may be designed in a variety of ways to provide city and county residents with a variety of housing options. We're bringing two separate housing options and two separate housing options that we believe are lacking in the community. Like Steve said, the Shire has put in townhomes right now. They went through with a pud, that pud availability is not available for us to rely upon. So that is the reason for the R4 request. Residential housing development goal. Provide residential development through the assurance of safety, property design, proper facilities and protection of passengers. It's to, the objective of that is to encourage development or redevelopment of adequate housing to meet the needs of all counties' current and future populations of all levels of income. We have all heard about the Bluegrass region, which is the central Kentucky area, and the housing crisis that is upon it. I don't think that's really a debate. I think the state has done extensive research. We've submitted in the record a study from the Kentucky Housing Corporation that shows a 9% deficit today of housing stock. And it's projected to rise, even with the already-approved plans, to 13% deficit by 2029. That is a big issue for Woodford County. That is not necessarily saying that what they're projecting is new people coming to Forsales. That is your already-existing population and it continuing to grow. People have children, they want to stay in Forsales. That's what those numbers account for. Transportation goal. Objective, improve traffic conditions and circulation within the county by encouraging where appropriate conducive to the character of existing neighborhood, the extension of debt insurance. Prairie Rose Way, where the current ballhomes development is, right now is designed for a stub industry at the end of that road. It's not going to go anywhere, it's just going to end at our property. This development is proposing to connect those two. The reason why that is such a big issue for Rose Ridge and Cedar Ridge that are behind our development is that currently, the only way to access those is through Old Drive Ridge. And the unfortunate scenario where, say, we have another terrible storm like we've had, another flood or another ice storm, where a tree falls and say somebody has a heart attack during that same day back in Cedar Ridge, the authorities are not going to be able to get to that house until they move that tree down Old Drive Ridge. We're talking about life and safety. This provides a second access point to those neighborhoods to allow fire and safety to get to those people. As of today, you would only have one access road through Old Drive Ridge. Again, objective of the transportation, coordinate non-motorized trails, such as pedestrian and bicycle. Again, as we talked about earlier, this is proposing to connect those pedestrian lanes with the existing walkways of this neighborhood that will allow people that want to walk to school or to walk downtown to be able to access those already-existing sidewalks easily from this development. Again, community facilities and services goal. The objectives, promote an adequate level of public services and facilities through the continued use of the urban service area concept. Again, this is in the urban service boundary, has been for an extended period of time. It has continuously, for the last now 45 years, asked to be residential. This is protecting your rural community by developing inside the urban service boundary. General land development goals. Adequate land in appropriate locations for all land uses by utilizing the land use system, i.e. the future land use map. As Steve's gone through and as I've said ad nauseam. And included in your packet is a 2005 future land use map that, again, shows this as Contemporary Neighborhood District. So this is not something that has come about, or this is not us deriving a zone change here that is not contemplated by your comp plan. The comp plan calls for this zone change. It calls for a bearin' type of housing stock, and that's what we're asking to provide you. Neighborhood and subdivision goal. Support strong, functional and affordable neighborhoods. Again, we're tailoring this development to a middle-income household that is looking for that first starter home or that second home, moving out of their initial starter home. But as of right now, there is not a housing stock available for sale in Woodford County that is in that 200 to 450 range. It's just not available. These are not going to be acre lots like Hensley Place that are million, $800,000 homes. That's okay. That's what a contemporary neighborhood is. That's what this district calls for, is a mix of these type of housing stocks. The objective of the neighborhood subdivision goal. Plan the development of new residential areas around the neighborhood concept by developing new areas as a neighborhood within itself. Rose Ridge, Cedar Ridge already exist. These will not be, this development will not be a part of those HOAs, but this will be a neighborhood within itself that is all encompassing of the continuation of Prairie Rose and the continuation of the residential up to Troy Pike. Neighborhood subdivision goal. Provide an opportunity for more compact residential development, including townhouses and condominiums. This is what your comp plan asks for, and this is what we're asking to provide you. This is all called for, again, inside the urban service development area. There's been some questions raised or some concerns that developer, or the ultimate developer of this property will try to rent these properties out, build and then rent. That is not the intent of this at all. That is not the plan. Every single one of these lots is intended to be sold and to be owned privately. And while people do have concerns about the R4 designation, like Steve said, the density that we're showing on this plan is about 3.8 units per acre. That is in line with your all-single-family development standards as is. So while it looks as though it's tight, it's not, this is what the single-family residential is supposed to look like in the contemporary neighborhoods. While we show you 85 total lots, and that's our density cap, 23 townhomes, 65 or 62 single-family lots, that's not to say that there will be 62 single-family lots. That could, the number could easily come down simply by the development practicalities that come up during the construction process. So it could be 60 lots, it could be 58, but it will at no point exceed that 62 when the townhomes never exceed that 23. As I mentioned earlier, we're proposing four additional conditions of approval that we think provide some security, not only to you all, but to the public, that what we're showing you is what we intend to develop. We're proposing what we're calling a density cap. 62 single-family lots, 23 townhomes. Again, those conditions of approval run with the land. That runs with the land. That means if it's sold, it doesn't mean that that developer gets taken over. That means that that developer is held to the same standard and the same conditions that we're proposing tonight. We're also willing to accept the condition that expressly precludes any type of apartment complexes. We think we're bound by the development plan as is, but if we want to add that express language, we're fine with that. We have no intent of bringing that apartment complex back to this plan. We've also had questions from the individuals that live in the residence right on the backside of the pond. There's a tree line that runs down the east side of the property. Can you keep those trees there? Yes. We're proposing a condition that keeps all of those trees along that common property line there, except for the minor cut that will drive to Prairie Rose Way. We're also providing a condition that will require a dense or other safety mechanism to be put around the pond. There obviously will be children in this neighborhood. We do not want any accidents in that pond area. We're also proposing a good condition that requires the townhomes to be built of brick, stone or natural material. We do not want a cheap townhome. We want a good-looking townhome because this is an integral way to your old city. We want this to be a brownstone type of look. And as you come in, you see these nice townhomes with residential development behind them. I think there is an undertone of concern that these conditions could easily be amended. To me, the bigger concern is what happens when Anderson develops? And what happens when the other residential developments happen? And this is all residential around here. That makes it a lot easier for somebody to come back five years from now and say, "Look, it's changed. This area's changed. We're now entitled to apartment complexes." We're giving the community and the commission the opportunity to nix that. Very rarely, very rarely does a developer come to the commission and say, "What I'm showing you is what I'm guaranteeing you I want to build." So we think this is a great opportunity for the community of Forsales to see what we're proposing and to be confident that it's not going to change tomorrow, three years, or five years from now, unless and until you all say otherwise. We also received a letter today from a KRC member that had some concerns about a spring on the property. As you'll see, there is a buffer around the pond where that spring is located. It's not going to be developed on it, can't be developed on it. A lot of the concerns I think we're going to hear tonight are, again, development and construction plan concerns. Tonight is about whether or not this property, as proposed to be changed to R4, is appropriate under the comprehensive plan. We believe that there is ample, ample ground under the comprehensive plan to find that this does. Thank you all.
Okay, did we have a sign-up sheet?
Yes. Point of order, who should I hand to? There are 53 people. Thank you. First name, first person to sign in is Carol Piper. I'm Anthony Wright.
When you come to the podium, be sure and state your name.
Okay.
And I'll give you five minutes.
Okay, great. My name is Carol Pfeifer and I'm a resident of Rose Ridge. I want to express my opposition to the proposed rezoning of fourteen-seventy Troy Pike from A1 to R4 high density. I oppose this zone change due to potential environmental impacts resulting from the development of this land. Development would be a taming of what is categorized as fine but prime agricultural land in a known karst terrain. If rezoned from agriculture to high-density residential, R4 would allow for the majority of the site to become impervious surfaces, leading to increased stormwater runoff that would overwhelm the existing total drainage and watershed systems and increase downstream flooding. In addition, contaminants in that stormwater would further deteriorate our water quality. The Kentucky Geological Survey, and I have in my copy the sites of how you can get to their site on karst terrain, along with the Kentucky Division of Water, has mapped the inner Bluegrass karst area, which includes for sales. KGS categorized karst as a geologic hazard, and I quote from KGS, "A geologic hazard is a naturally recurring geological condition that may result in property damage or is a threat to the safety of people." KGS has mapped and titled karst groundwater basins in the Lexington thirty-by-sixteen-minute quadrant, and it has a special insert for for sales. I know you can't read this, I can't read it with or without my glasses, but it's on their website, I'll include it and the site to it. And it's very interesting to note that in this entire quadrant for sales, Kentucky, is a special insert because the entire area in the insert has high potential for karst terrain and for drainage issues. The insert outlines our karst groundwater patchment basin boundary. Numerous perennial groundwater flow routes, stream sinks, and underflow perennial springs, which there is one on the site. The area is also categorized as having high potential for karst groundwater basin development, which means that the outer boundary, which they've shown this, which already extends almost to this property, is continually growing out. Karst areas are made up of sinkholes, underground streams, caves, and springs that naturally serve as stormwater sewers. As we pave over our farm land and karst areas, we create high-velocity stormwater runoff drainage flow into these sinkholes that overwhelm the natural stormwater sewer. We have historically done this for sales. We have channeled our stormwater runoff into drainage basins with sinkholes. We get rid of our water that way. The stormwater is contaminated with everything that rots off of our lawns, roofs, driveways, and roads, which deteriorates the water quality in our underground streams, springs, our tributaries, and the Kentucky River. These are the drinking water sources for our citizens. For these reasons, I would urge you to deny the zoning request, not only to preserve the prime agricultural land in known karst terrain, but also prevent increased stormwater runoff and associated flooding, as well as to prevent the further deterioration of our water quality. And I would ask that this document and map be entered into the record. Thank you.
Wait a minute. I hate to be this way, but if you all could hold applause till the end, it just adds so much on time, and we truly do understand, and we want to be able to hear everybody and everything everybody's got to say, so I'd just ask that you would hold the applause, please.
The next person to sign in, it looks like Lisa, is it Perslaka?
Paris.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. Good evening. My name is Lisa Perslaka and I'm a longtime resident of Rose Ridge subdivision. I am in opposition to this rezoning change and created a petition against it. The petition gained just shy of nine hundred signatures, and approximately seventy percent of those signatures are from the citizens here at for sales, and I'm submitting that to the committee. This was created on an official online petition, website, change.org. We understand that growth is inevitable, but we do not agree with the R4 zoning. The second item I'd like to discuss is how the residents here at for sales remain aware of the proposed rezoning, particularly if the signs that were erected to inform residents. I have pictures of these signs to submit as well. As per KRS 10212 statute, notice of the hearing shall be posted conspicuously on the property, the classification of which is proposed to the change, for fourteen consecutive days immediately prior to the hearing. The posting shall be as follows. The signs shall state zoning change and proposed classification change in letters three inches in height. The time, place, and date of hearing shall be in letters at least one inch in height. The signs placed were in direct violation of the statute, as these letters for zoning change were only two-point-five inches in height and the proposed classification was only a mere one inch, barely visible to a room. And technically, there's a penalty defined that occurs per day with this violation. Our unplanning and zoning is not following statute, so how can we trust anyone to look out for our best interest? Who is looking out for the citizens of for sales? How are we even able to have this hearing when the residents were not properly informed? As per the statute, the less residents know, the less resistance. I ask that you listen to the citizens of for sales and write down for the authority zoning. Thank you.
The next signing is Lori Sorman.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lori Sorman, and I stand here today respectfully opposing the proposed rezoning from A1 to R4, high-density at fourteen-seventy Troy Pike. So I oppose the zoning due to the traffic burden that it will place on Troy Pike. First, drivers trying to exit out of the proposed subdivision would have trouble making a left turn from the subdivision. Because of that, many of these residents would then cut through the Rose Ridge subdivision in order to make a left at the stoplight at Eldery Ridge and Troy Pike. This would cause wear and tear on the roads in Rose Ridge, and the added traffic would be a safety hazard to the children who live on those streets. These are neighborhood streets where children play, not a thoroughfare for another neighborhood to drive through. There would also be an excessive traffic on Old Dry Ridge, which is currently the only way into the subdivision. It has been said that we would possibly be adding two lanes, which would just encourage drivers to speed down Old Dry Ridge, leading to more accidents. Second, as so many residents of the high-density subdivision drive toward downtown for sales, the extra traffic would cause a severe bottleneck, especially at peak traffic times when people are going to work. The downtown streets of for sales cannot be widened because of historic buildings such as the Woodford County Library. This added traffic would put in unnecessary strain on those of us, myself included, who travel through that area on car employment. Finally, the influence of traffic, both people and cars brought in by the proposed high-density subdivision, would be a strain on our roads, our stoplights, our neighborhoods, and our schools. I had written in my paper, which I'll submit in a minute, a more current traffic report needs to be done before any zoning changes are made. I know you said tonight that there is an updated one, but I didn't hear the attorney speak to the conditions of it. I don't know respectfully who the gentleman is who did the updated study, and because we didn't have the paperwork, we don't have, I can't really speak to it. So with that in mind, I would like to submit my document into the record, and I think it will be time to consider it.
If the traffic impact study was submitted, it's a public record, it's subject, it can be kept guarded from the planning office. It's also on the change.org website and has been, so it's been available to everybody. The traffic impact study also showed that the development will have no impact on Troy Pike as an engineered traffic.
On gas.
So we can follow the science and the engineering of the traffic impact study, or we can guess on it. We provided the traffic impact study, it shows no impact on the local surface.
The next person to sign in is Gail Daniel.
My name's Steve Daniel, my wife Gail is sitting back here. We submitted a letter last week, hopefully you guys have it. So if you have it, we'll just concede our conference. Thank you.
Penelope Evans.
Point of order, could we call the next person so I can be up here close and ready to, so we can cut this time in between speakers down?
I'm gonna go ahead and the next, next name.
Get the next one ready, okay.
John Sorman. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, Miss Evans, sorry.
And who's next, so we can get it in?
John Sorman.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Penelope and I'm here today to respectfully oppose the proposed zoning from A1 to R4 high-density at fourteen-seventy Troy Pike. My opposition to this rezoning request is based on my opinion that it is time to call for a timeout, a time to press the pause button. Before making any significant decisions regarding the future of our town, we should wait and consider the determinations being made by the planning commission, which is currently engaged in drafting an updated comprehensive plan. Major zoning changes should not be pushed through while that process is underway. By passing the updated vision for our community, we erode public trust and signaled that resident in Blitt holds little weight. Additionally, allowing spot zoning sets a dangerous precedent, opening the door to future inconsistent rezonings that potentially undermine orderly growth management. On a strictly personal note, may I say that my husband and I moved to for sales in 2008 after living in Lexington for thirty years. And for sales was everything we were looking for in a community. And you know what the really important thing was that attracted us to for sales? It was because it was not Lexington. Our new town had good schools, low crime, the town and surrounding areas were beautiful. It was quiet, no constant gridlock, not a lot of sirens and horns blowing. For sales had most of the things we wanted and little of the things we did not. Today, however, I believe that we, if we are not careful to wisely preserve the character of this community, we could jeopardize the very reasons many of us choose to live here in the first place. Vibrant, productive, and safe communities do not just happen, they are made. They are carefully planned and well thought out. Communities like for sales are made by ordinary people, just like those of us who are here this evening. We live here every day, we know our town, we care about what the future holds for us and our families. When the developers and builders are done with their projects, they will move on to bigger and better projects. But we, the ordinary people, will still live here, and this will still be our town. It is imperative that we become the guardians of the values we want to preserve, because it will not happen if we don't make it happen. Therefore, for the sake of the integrity of the process and fairness, I ask you to defer or deny this rezoning request until the new comprehensive plan is complete. When the planning commission propagates its proposed plan, we will then have ample opportunity to review it and make comments, suggestions, and decisions that will take us through what I understand will be the next ten years. Now is not the time to rush. For these reasons, I respectfully urge you to deny this rezoning request, and thank you for your time and consideration, and I wish to submit this into the record, please.
John Sorman is the next name on the list, and then the next name after that is Mark Clements.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is John Sorman, and I am here to respectfully oppose the proposed rezoning from A1 to R4 for fourteen-seventy Troy Pike. The zoning request is premature from an infrastructure standpoint. The for sales planning study in December 2023 identified Troy Pike corridors needing two additional lanes to handle projected traffic growth. The Kentucky Transportation Committee has not yet approved or funded these improvements, making it irresponsible to increase density before the system can handle it. I also have statements regarding stormwater retention, what the impervious surfaces where that water can go. It's been mentioned at that pond several times tonight, that pond in the most recent time on the last storm, so I am curious where that stormwater's gonna go. I urge the commission to respect the comprehensive plan, which calls for growth only where infrastructure can support it, and reject the rezoning until necessary upgrades are secured. I wish to submit this document. Thank you for your time.
After Mr. Clements, Fred Fonders, the, no, Fred Powers is the next name.
Hello, my name is Mark Clements, I'm a citizen of for sales in Kentucky. My issue is historic in nature. We have a rich history here in Woodford County, especially in the city of for sales, the historic district. My question is, is there been an archaeological study done? And the reason I raise that question is, a new project that we're going to open up right behind the Ford House is going to become an entertainment center. I asked when that was, at the last meeting I went to, I was not far enough in advance to ask the question earlier, if they had done an archaeological study. The bottom of the globe's a historic site, no archaeological study was done. Like I say, we have a history that extends back into the Revolutionary War, the Civil War, and prior to that, Native Americans have lived in this area. My question to the board and the individuals who have built this project, if any background study to colleges and archaeological people has been done, and if there is not, if they'll still take the time and care, that if they come across something that appears to be of historical nature, that that is taken care of, it's not just bulldozed and drenched, because once it's gone, it's gone. And one of the reasons that people like this part of the country is our history. Thank you for your time.
After Mr. Powers, it's Mark McIntosh.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Fred Powers, and I'm here tonight to respectfully oppose rezoning. People have talked about it, we'll go from there. But let me say this, I am against it because moving this property from A1 to R4 is a mistake. My reason for this change is due to the traffic burden that it places on Troy Pike. According to the Palmer Traffic Study, Troy Pike or Highway Thirty-three is already at a level of service grade of a D. Adding this will probably drop it to an E, maybe even to an F, if we do not do something to the infrastructure. Adding high-density housing will worsen the congestion, cause unnecessary delays, and increase safety risk. If you travel this area in the morning and/or in the evening, you don't need a traffic study to know what the congestion already is. As a final point, currently, there are over twenty-two hundred towns and units already approved as per planning and zoning documents. Adding more high-density development at this time seems unnecessary. For these reasons, I respectfully urge you to deny this zoning request. I wish to submit this to Ms. Orell, make it a matter of record, and thank you for your time.
After Mr. McIntosh, the next name is Brooke Knopf. After Mr. McIntosh, the next name is Brooke Knopfus.
Go ahead, Brooke. Check for marks with us, he just come with a helper.
After Mr. McIntosh, the next name is Pete Peterson.
Pete Nester. Pete Nester, somebody else. I couldn't, I couldn't help you. So I'm a resident of Forsales and I stand in opposition. Oh, Pete Peterson. I'm a resident of Forsales. I stand in opposition. I really don't want to rehash what you said. I appreciate the impassioned statements that many of our, our neighbors and friends have made. I stand in opposition to the zoning change from R, R1, or A1 to R4. Appreciate it.
Kathy, Kathy Crook is the next name and then after that it's Don Colber.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Crook and I am here tonight to respectfully oppose the proposed zoning from A1 to R4, high density, the 1470 Troy Pike. Um, I'm not gonna read my whole letter because of time, but I do want to say things have changed since 1992. We came here then and couldn't even find an apartment, two-bedroom apartment for my parents. We found one for a connection for us. Um, and we really needed a three-bedroom, but our thirteen-year-old son didn't mind sleeping on the couch for a few months. Um, but through a lot of planning, good planning, this commission through the years has, um, added a lot more options both for purchase and rental to new families, new people. And I commend them for that because we really were frustrated with the lack of housing. But it seems that we've kind of gotten carried away. We need to know when enough is enough, especially as we choose the locations for more housing. Um, please deny this rezoning and allow Forsales to grow in a balanced, sustainable way. Thank you, and I'd like to submit this.
After Don Colber, the next name is Tim Crook.
Green, I submitted documents early today, who should be.
Take your name, please.
And while I, while you're looking for that, let me introduce myself. I'm Don Colber.
Sorry.
Um, I grew up on a area tobacco farm in Berry County and so I'm very familiar with the agriculture community. I, um, three years ago, I was fortunate enough to marry a long-term residence, resident of this county. And so therefore I was able to, uh, become a resident and currently reside at Bluegrass Road here in Berry County. Other background, uh, I am a professor, retired last fall, forty-five years in engineering. And fortunately I have known the applicant since his days as a student many years ago and have respect for him. I am a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth and also I have served as a planning and zoning commissioner in your seat in Joining County for over fifteen years. I would like to say that, uh, as a disclaimer, these comments are my personal opinion and my observations. Uh, they do not represent my former employer nor are they to be taken as professional engineering advice or service. My comments are, I highly respect the ability of a property owner to legally use their land as their desire. I have stated the document submitted through a, uh, public request and I do understand the, uh, request for the R1 zoning. I urge the Commission to deny this request based on the following four major points. First, it has not been sufficiently demonstrated that the proposed R4 zoning classification is in agreement with the currently adopted 2024 comprehensive plan and the recent zoning petition. I have noted there about the agricultural and that was previously admitted. But I would also like to say that if you look at, uh, at my document, the facts presented are footnoted with where they can be found in the comprehensive plan. And if you look at the, um, figure twenty-three map that was shown earlier about the land use districts, it should be noted that all other R4 zone areas are in the traditional neighborhood or the workplace and boi- workplace slash employment districts. They are not in the contemporary neighborhood district. Second major point, it has not been sufficiently demonstrated that the proposed R1 zoning is appropriate. It may be argued that the existing A1 zoning isn't inappropriate at this time. However, the proposed R1 zoning is not appropriate because of the following five items. One, according to our current Urban County zoning map, uh, that's figure eighteen, all the contiguous properties are zone A1, R1A, R1B, or, uh, the PUD district. The nearest R4 zone is over 1.1 miles and is separated from the proposed site by at least eight named subdivisions. Number three, other R1 zone properties are adjacent to industrial, professional, business, or R3 zones. The majority of the other R4 zone properties are near the center of town. And finally, on that item, the density of lots in the proposed R1, R4 development are a hundred and forty-four percent and a hundred and twenty-six percent higher density than the recently approved developed adjacent properties. The third major point, it has not been sufficiently demonstrated that there have been major changes of economic, fiscal, or social nature within the area which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character. One, the most currently approved map indicates the property is zoned as A1 and all the other contiguous properties in that zoning map are A1, R1A, or R1B. I now understand the PUD. Another point on that is that the R4 zone conditional uses that are permitted are very much out of the nature of these surrounding areas. Now, R1, the R1 conditional zone is best used for home city homes and short-term rooms. The other is, we do have the item four, which is listed on the second page, the traffic study conditions. I would like one comment on that and I didn't see anything in the presentation that was regarding a phase one or phase two delay. It should be noted in the tra- in the, uh, traffic study that, quote, "The Troy Pike improvements were not of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's six-year highway length."
I'm gonna have to stop you. We have your document, we do have your document.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The next person to sign in is, is Tim Crook and then after that, John Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Tim Crook. Uh, and, uh, I live in Cedar Ridge subdivision. I've lived here in Woodford County since nineteen ninety-two and, uh, I moved my family here, uh, when I was, um, asked to be the first principal of Northside Elementary for the first ten years of that school. Uh, and, um, currently in my fiftieth year as an educator. And I just have a really deep concern for this rezoning in light of the overcrowding it's going to put on Southside Elementary, in addition eventually middle school and high school, but especially Southside Elementary. And I too have sat for many minutes in the morning waiting uh, and seeing traffic doing things that they shouldn't be doing, trying to get around those, trying to get through town. Um, and especially before the time changes, we're faced in the dark, especially in the morning and any additional traffic is going to not, you know, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. Uh, I want to respectfully oppose the rezoning of the area, especially for this reason, with my educator eyes. Additionally, though, um, to go along with that is that traffic impact, uh, that just cannot be ignored. Adding this many homes and townhomes will significantly increase those peak hour traffic volumes. I can't imagine adding an additional area of housing but right there at the foot of Southside Elementary especially. So I respectfully urge the Commission to reject this rezoning to protect community, community character, public safety, and infrastructure integrity. So I wish to submit this document into the record. Thank you.
After John Thompson, the next name Frank Eaton, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Thompson. I'm a native of Western County. And I come before you to respectfully oppose the proposed zoning from A1 to R4 high density. I wish to talk about, uh, things I have to present because this gentleman, uh, spoke so eloquently and touched on many of the things that I wanted to address. But I do, would like to address that, um, the comprehensive plan and the existing comprehensive plan in 2018 in the status of preserving neighborhood character. It explicitly states that infill development must be compatible in density scale and intensity with existing uses. Placing a high-density R4 zone into the low-zoning R1B neighborhoods that surround this proposed development would irreversibly disrupt that character. Also, the zoning maps, land use district maps from Appendix A, particularly figures eighteen and twenty-three, show a deliberate and separate between low-density R1B areas and high-density R4 areas. High-density development is strategically placed near major roads and commercial corridors. And I don't see that that's the case in this situation. Uh, respectfully, I would like to submit, uh, this document into the record and thank you very much for your consideration.
The next name Frank Eaton, if I'm pronouncing that right, and then after that it looks like Frank Stark. We missed somebody on the list. Is it possible that she could just insert herself and speak right now? Uh, well, yeah, what's the name?
Brooke Knopfus.
Oh, yes, yes, I, I knew, I called the name, yes, go ahead.
I heard it and then the next person you said was a different name, so I didn't want to mess it up. Uh, my name is Brooke Knopfus. I've been a resident of Woodford County my whole life. I'm thirty-five years old. Uh, we've been a resident of Rose Ridge for the last twenty years. Uh, we are opposing the rezoning from the A1 to the R4. And I understand that the new plan is townhomes and first-time homes, which is, sounds great, but it is going to be very hard to build a nice home and townhome with all brick and everything for that, um, price range. And that will keep the integrity of the homes around. Um, thank you. I want to submit this.
Frank Eaton. The next name is Frank Stark. The next name is Marla Zanelli.
Hang on, Frank Stark is back here.
You want to go ahead? Good evening. My name is Frank Stark. I am a resident of Woodford County. My wife and I live in Starbridge, which is right off of Troy Pike or Route Thirty-Three. I really wasn't intending to be up here speaking because when I walked in, I thought it was a sign and she'd have been. So, but I watched inside, I'm on the list, as I just, first of all, I'd like to compliment everyone for actually being here this evening and stating their viewpoints, which in fact they've stated very well, uh, and why they're opposing this zone, rezone development. Traffic is my real issue. I sat on the work of adjustments for twelve years here and, and I know what goes through and the processes of trying to put together a plan, developers coming in. And most of the time developers aren't really invited to come in. They come in because they see an opportunity to, uh, to do what they do best, develop properties. And, and I know there's needs about having places for our young people who grow up here, go away to school, come back, and have nowhere to live. So I understand all that. But having said all that, I really am opposed to this rezoning. It's, uh, it's unbelievable the amount of time that we spend sitting there waiting to turn on to Route Thirty-Three or Troy Pike. And I can't imagine adding these additional homes, that there's not going to be even more and more and more traffic problems and accidents. And I think it really needs to be looked at, this traffic study, I can't imagine that this impact study, that there really was no, really no issue, it shouldn't be a problem. Well, I'll assure you, there is a problem already and it's only going to add to it. So I thank you for listening, uh, and, uh, I hope that the zoning commission does the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Marla Zanelli and I live in the Colony and I appreciate the room between me and my neighbors. Uh, I am opposing the rezoning from R1 to R4. And, you know, I just want to share a, a number of my concerns. Number one is traffic. Number two, the location, it's a bad location for high density. Number three is runoff, uh, that will, will and could be a big problem. I sold real estate in California for thirty-five years in a beautiful area of San Diego called Del Mar. And in the seventies, Del Mar, east of Del Mar, was all fields and cattle and, and open farmland. And now it is high-density housing for miles and miles. And that high-density housing causes a lot of runoff into the ocean. And when it rains in California, which doesn't happen that often lately, but when it rains, uh, they advise swimmers, surfers to not go in the ocean because it's polluted from the runoff. So with your lands around here and, and, you know, the, uh, your underground water that feeds those lands, you've got to be careful on how you zone, where you zone, and what you do with your building. So I'm just wanting to, uh, express my experience and concern. Thank you.
Tony Curtis.
My name is Tony Curtis and I live in Forsales on a residential street. It's two blocks long and we have eighteen hundred cars a day coming on my street. Um, I have been, uh, this is a different angle, I don't understand, but more traffic outside my house means more traffic in front of my house. Um, it's not comfortable sitting on my front porch because of the traffic, the trucks, the, uh, concrete messes, the, all the development. Um, the latest traffic from Forsales Police Department is where the figure. The latest traffic from Bensales Police Department is where the figure of 1,800 cars a day came from. I'm opposed to any development outside Main. There's been a lot of talk about the comprehensive plan in 1977. And since that time, we've been asking on Montgomery Avenue for help. It's been promised several times, but every time, the development continues. So this is just a voice from a different situation. I'm asking for this council to think about the impact on those of us who have been here for a long time and who have paid our taxes and have asked for a different plan, something to relieve our congestion. Again, since 1977, it seems like that's enough time to get something submitted. Thank you.
Ben Hanson.
Yes, I'm Ben Hanson. I'm also representing my wife, who's over there too, Kim Hanson. I'd like to say, you know, there's been a lot of good people up here saying a lot of very truthful things, I feel like. And I currently live on Legends, and luckily, I think, since I'm at the top of the hill, it's a little bit easier to get on either left or right. But I kind of feel sorry for the people going toward town, especially that whether they're turning right or left, they're sitting there waiting, and it's just going to get a lot worse. I think this development, I'm against changing the zoning board at this time because of transportation problems people have kind of been talking about. And so until there's a plan on how, you know, cars and people are going to move, I don't feel like they can proceed on with, you know, any more of the planned so far, ours development. So I think there needs to be a study done and approved and on the six-year plan because we know how sometimes that even gets pushed further before you jump out there and do a lot of quick development. Because the way this is set up is it, within, you know, 50% of it would probably be built within two years. So half the traffic from that subdivision would be on there very quickly. And it just takes time and a lot of forethought on how you're going to handle current traffic as well as any more proposed traffic. And so I appreciate, you know, everybody listening and coming to this meeting tonight, and hopefully y'all make a wise decision. Thank you.
Julie Tooth.
Good evening. My name is Julie Tooth, and I'm a resident, along with my husband Nicholas Tooth, in the Legends. We moved to Woodford County in 1997. Kind of like someone else here is saying Lexington's traffic was just becoming overwhelming. Once again now, it's beginning to feel very overwhelming with this proposed development. I do appreciate the comments from Visions tonight and the enlightening comments that you made about the proposal. But nothing else has been said that I've heard tonight about all of the other activity around town that is commencing almost on a monthly basis, it seems like. Our U of 60 corridor is going to change significantly in the next few years with the development at Payne's Mill and the Hardinfield property there. And then down by Adina Trace and the Barrows property, not to mention out, a little further out on Bluegrass Parkway. I've just been feeling overwhelmed. It's too much. Too soon. We don't have the infrastructure. The traffic, the safety is a big concern. I have over 2,200 miles on my e-bike. That's all been around here. Every time I go out, I hope that I come back in one piece, and that's even just as it is now. That's not without any of the other developments, so I just wish there was a little more forethought and hopefully we can slow down a little bit and build some infrastructure first. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service to the community.
Mary Catherine Gratz.
Good evening. My name is Mary Catherine Gratz, and I live on McCounseary Road, and I've been a resident of Woodford County since 1966. I speak today to respectfully oppose the rezoning at 1470 Troy Pike on the grounds of insufficient need or capacity for growth and protection of farmland. There are over 2,200 housing units already approved and in process before this project would even break ground. That's an increase to Bensales population by 51%, or 5,000 residents. South Side Elementary is nearly at capacity with only 40 seats left. Our brand-new high school, of which we are all justifiably so proud, is at 92% capacity in its first year of operation. The comprehensive plan indicates that sufficient land already exists within the urban service boundaries to accommodate projected growth for the next 10 to 20 years, even using a conservative market factor of 2.0. There is no demonstrated need to sacrifice agricultural land when urban capacity remains. The community is also currently engaged in drafting a new comprehensive plan. Major zoning changes should not be pushed through while that process is underway. Bypassing the community vision erodes public trust and signals that resident input holds little weight. Community opposition to this project has been vocal, passionate, and well-documented, and I hope commissioners will listen to that. For these reasons, I respectfully urge you to deny this zoning, this rezoning request. Thank you for your timely consideration, and I wish to submit this document into the record.
Glenn Gratz.
Hello, I'm Glenn Gratz, and as a school bus driver serving Bensales area, I see firsthand how development decisions affect our roads, our children, and our community. I'm writing, speaking here to oppose the request to rezone 1470 Troy Pike from agriculture to high-density residential. Troy Pike is already an heavily traveled road, especially during school hours. Adding high-density housing at the location, at this location would increase traffic congestion and create serious safety concerns for buses, students, and other drivers. Narrow shoulders, limited sightlines, and fast-moving traffic already make the route challenging. Packing more vehicles into that corridor without the infrastructure to support them will only make matters worse. Beyond traffic, I've watched farmland along my routes slowly disappear. That land feeds into our local economy, our identity, and the natural beauty our kids are growing up with. Once it's gone, it's gone. Please consider the long-term impact this country is suffering. It has on families, schools, and those of us on the front lines trying to get children to and from school safely every day. I would submit this proposal to the record. Thank you.
Abby Webb.
Hello, my name is Abby Webb, and I'm a resident of Rose Ridge subdivision. On the aerial view that was presented in the presentation earlier tonight, you can actually see my home, as it is adjacent to the property that we're talking about today. I oppose to the redistricting or rezoning of that property to an R4 at this time. I have children, and currently I do have concerns about the impact of additional enrollment in our schools. I think there will be a ripple effect to having to redistrict the elementary schools as well as finding additional financial support so that we can continue to give children in our county a quality education. Also, I have a child in middle school, and I would like to mention, I do not know what the capacity is at the middle school. However, I can tell you that for this year, she has not had a locker because they do not have enough for their kids. Also, I would like to ask if the, um, Bluegrass Parkway exit ramp onto Lexington Road has been considered in this construction? Because adding another residential subdivision will create more people who need to go to work. And I do not believe that Woodford County has grown economically to support this amount of people coming in. And so we will see an additional growth in commuters. We've already seen where that ramp backs up. It's hard to get where you need to go at busy times. And I do believe that that will also have to be taken into consideration and re-engineered should we continue to grow our population this way. Thank you for your time.
Let me just hold on a minute. Commissioners, is everybody good? We've been at this now for a while. If I need a break? If I get, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead.
Jacqueline Nelson, if I'm reading that right. And the next one is Libby Welker.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Nielsen. I live on South Main Street, and I vote in opposition due to all the issues already mentioned. Thank you.
Libby Welker. The next name is Paul Gennelli.
Good evening. My name is Libby Welker. I live in Stowbridge. I'm a retired farmer. I moved to Bensales because it's a small community without a whole lot of homes, and I'm in opposition to changing from farmland to residential. I think too much of our farmland is becoming concrete, and we need to preserve the beauty of our state. Thank you for your consideration.
And after Paul Gennelli, the next name is Judy Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Paul Gennelli. I'm a resident of Woodford County for the last 12 years. My wife is born and raised here. I'm a 78er farmer, and I enjoy our environment. And we see, even in the country, we're seeing building permits being granted and granted. I personally believe this county needs more torn-home building until our infrastructure is repaired. We still have people who, where I live, that's a drive of town, water tanks in their trucks that water their houses. We don't, we cannot sustain this growth. You talk about traffic studies. We don't need traffic studies. Just go pick up your kids at school. You see what goes on every day with the government ransom. My wife goes an hour early and wait in line, and then you can't get out. There's just so much that needs to be done. I grew up in South Florida, where in the 60s, you could walk, I grew up in a park on a beach. You could walk down the streets to the beach. You could walk to school in a little town like this. Now, they use 4I-95. Now they've added subdivision, subdivision, it's all the way to everywhere. And I hate to see that happen here in this beautiful land. There's a lot of farmers that are here, and people come to visit. It's beautiful. And to see all these houses, just if you look at those plans, that number of houses on 20 acres, I just can't even fathom. I live in one house and 70 acres. But now, these streets, you're putting in such density. Do all these houses have garages? Are the cars going to be in the streets? Can a fire truck turn around and help the sack? There's a lot of issues at stake here, and I'm not going to say yes or no. That's your job. You live here. It's the future that you're putting in this county, this city. It's in your hands. You want to destroy it? Go right ahead. Thank you.
Judy Thompson.
I speak in memory and honor of my husband Tim Thompson, that used to be here often at your meetings. He had many things that he would bring to help people and to help beat a fire area. He left many gifts. Helsley is one of them, and the Shire is another. I live in the Shire, and when I leave the Shire, I imagine what that driveway would be across the street from there. And I can imagine looking three different ways to be able to leave my subdivision. I hope that this amendment, that it will be, we will have R4 rejected. And I thank you for all the work that you do.
Mick McNulty.
I'm Mr. Dalton. I'm a resident of Rose Ridge. I've been for you on other activities. I'm here tonight on behalf of some other people that were not able to speak. One I'm going to submit is with regards to the traffic studies, specifically some of the points that have already been brought up, but some additional ones that point out the need for traffic to be addressed. Another with regards to the population, and somebody just said that, you know, we already have 2,200 housing units, and we're going to increase the population by 51%. And then finally, my own is with regards to the density taking place. If we think about what's going in next to Adina Trace already, and is already approved, the 222 apartments that are going to go into the Anderson apartment, or complex, the Wawa gas station that's going to go in there, the Wawa is going to draw people off of the parkway that do not live here just because it's that type of destination story, gas station. We are going to overwhelm a corner of the county that is already overwhelmed, and there is no need for additional R4 development in that neighborhood. I'd like to ask you to reject this proposal, and I would like to submit this to the record.
Tracy Savuleski.
I'm Tracy. I'm here to receive my pardon.
David Knott.
I'm Grant. Grant, sorry.
I've been calling the worst. My name is David Cratt. Thank you for being here, the conservative community, and welcome. Great color. I'm not going to read the very thing because a lot of comments have been already spoken. And I'm going to present my letter as part of the record. My purpose is to ask if this proposal be denied. And I'm going to go through, kind of highlight my rationale, my reasoning, a little background. My family lived here, lived in Bensales for 33 years, and who'd been to Stowbridge 26 years ago. Professionally, I'm a transportation engineer, kind of getting old at 239 years. I worked in the highways. I worked in the transportation academy for over half my career, so, you know, I may be wrong, but I have lived and breathed a lot of this over my time. The, also, I really do believe that growth is necessary and good, but it must be done within the context of a comprehensive plan, be sustainable, and not just kind of flock in there because there's space to that. As a resident, I rely on Route 33. I can't leave home without it. I commute on it. I bicycle on it. You know, maybe I just chop off one of my hips by saying that. Not many people do. I use downtown services, so I travel collectively quite a bit, so I do use this old four door. So, you know, largely not to deny So, you know, largely not to deny this, and three main reasons I wanted to highlight is appropriate development and land use. Second one is the density of this development and the R4 in particular and conflicts with comprehensive plan and also the traffic and traffic capacity and safety. So, I'll dive a little further into that. I would hope the committee, the commission, excuse me, is aware of the 2,200 homes that are currently available on the shelf. I'd say the homes planted, properties that are available. That's a known number, it exists in the inventory. And you can do the math, averaging two, two and a half occupants per unit, that comes up about 5,100 new residents in this community. And if this buildout happens, that's a 50%, over 50% increase in our population base that we have here today, about 10,000. That's, I've lived here now, it's been 33 years and there's no model that shows that kind of growth that is needed and warranted, and that's without having any additional zoning or new lots available. If you build out in that 10-year span with those kind of homes that are already, those planted properties, we're already exceeding our growth, we couldn't sustain it from our infrastructure. And the data supports this argument because if you go back and look at growth data for 20 years or 25 years, it's all very clear. Try not to cover the detail. Density of the R4 is inappropriate at this location and comprehensive plan in some areas. Both the main plan and Appendix A versus the comp plan emphasizes the importance of preserving the neighborhood character, explicitly states the initial development must be compatible with the density and density scale and intensity in the existing use. It's placing high-density R4 into this low-density housing area with most of which is 1RB or whatever the other one is, it's just 104 Shire. That would invert and irreversibly disrupt the character. Compared to the Shire, and this is again, I'm going to go through the math, this development based on what's shown would be three and a half times roughly of what's the density of the Shire today. And everything else is even, you know, less dense. So we're talking just too dense in this location. R4, just too dense, okay. Last main point I want to talk about is the compounding traffic. We've heard a lot about that tonight. The planning study that was done by Palmer, one and a half of the city, points out a very real need for a longer-range plan. And I realize that decisions regarding traffic impacts and permitting entrances does not follow this group here. I understand that very well. It falls to the transportation cabinet, they own the road. However, this commission has the responsibility to weigh the impacts as well and to make the decision that development would have any, would have significant impacts.
Your time's up, I'm sorry.
Please just don't pass that by the transportation cabinet. Thank you.
Willie Cox.
Hi, I have a question, just a second. I'm from out here. I'm on Walker, take me a mile or so, if you have a name.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Hi, I'm Willie Cox, born and raised Woodford County. Born and raised on a farm in the Hillsborough area. And so, I live here for 87 years. I would like to, and now, I'm a resident of Stow Avenue. Haven been for four and something years. Before that, I've been on for 25 years, all in the South End. And I, my whole 40 years in, on Stow Avenue. Honestly, in the last several years, I don't know where you folks did the, your, your traffic stuff, but we really need to come to Stow Avenue and to go down to and Morgan Street and you need to be there at the lifetime limit. In order to see what they're telling you, let me tell you. I never saw the big, big trucks on Stow Avenue until more recently. And it's a cul-de-sac, it's no outlet, it says so right at the end of the street. And the big trucks come up in there all the time trying their best to get through, to get over to Montgomery and out to Vicki. And they can't get turned around. They get up in there, they can't even get out of there. And, and you're really disappointed, so. You're really, you're really, this thing, I was thinking, I don't want to do it again. And I'm not telling anybody anything that yet. This is so weird. Some of us are looking forward to being married there. My husband and son are already there. And that I, I'm planning to be there probably shortly. I'm ready for it, you know? But I, we don't really need, we don't want that, all that. People living out there with us. I mean, when it all, this time, I think about so period, that I'm in my new boots expecting a very, very beautiful place for us to live. And this is a place we agree. So, I encourage you to, I do everything in Woodford County, if you know me. I encourage you to say before you do. And, and say what you can do, but I appreciate it, giving it to my team. And to, to work with you.
David Paul.
My name is David Paul, I live in Rose Ridge and I do not know how to follow this. No, I just wanted to come up first, thank the group for allowing the community to speak at the school and then tonight, thanks for your service. I, I do oppose the change from A1 to R4, so, thank you.
Pamela Paul.
Hi, I'm Pamela Paul. I've been up since 4:00 AM, so I'm going to try not to rainwater everybody. I want to thank you for coming out to the school and thank you for the changes that you made and for listening to us. I think that, that says a lot. I am opposed to changing from A1 to R4. Like our neighbors have said, I'm opposed due to the infrastructure. I live in Rose Ridge. We have issues with the stormwater. I, I have thoughts about that, the stormwater runoff, our drainage ditches fill up with the rain, what's going to happen with these ponds when we build more houses out there. The traffic, everybody's talked about the traffic in the traffic studies, but anybody who drives down there knows where the traffic issues are. So, we don't need to talk about traffic studies. Electricity, nobody's talked about electricity. Who, who's lost electricity? And what are we doing about that? So, we're going to add more houses and it seems like anytime we have a storm, we lose electricity for days in the cas. And it's a problem, I think it's kind of, kind of rich, we're on their traffic, on their traffic grid, I mean, electricity grid. And we, the infrastructure just can't handle more houses. So, I'm really concerned about that with electricity, also with the water. And this is the water we drink, not just the stormwater. I really just think with the multiple building projects that's going on in Versailles, it worries me that it's too much, too fast. Some of the things that I've heard the neighbors talk about is, you know, maybe we need to think about measured growth. Growth is good, we moved to Versailles because we appreciated the small-town feel. And it feels like that is going away really fast. I liked what some people talked about, about a balanced, sustainable growth and protecting community character. I'm also concerned about the R4 zoning and my personal property value and putting that next to my property. What is that going to do to my property value? So, thank you for your consideration and thank the zoning commission for allowing us to come out here and speak.
Ed Doyle. And the next name is Alex Kane.
Yeah, I just want to, Ed Doyle, I've lived in the Legends. I just wanted to, this voice I have been hearing that I oppose, just going to R4. That's all I needed to say, thank you.
Alex Kane.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us time to speak to you all this evening and really appreciate all that you all do for this town. I was born and raised here, lived 18 years of my life, then went to college for, and left and lived in Lexington until last year when my partner and I moved here. We built a house in Helmsley. And we were so excited, our dream home, where we want to spend the rest of our lives together. And, you know, then six months later, we find out about this and it's like, oh, great. So, how's that going to work? But, you know, I just wanted to say that I do really appreciate the changes that were made and I, I think that something like this is not a terrible idea. I'm, I'm opposed, we are both opposed to this as it is presented, mostly because of the infrastructure issues. And we would like to send our future children to South Side Ride Process Street one day and would we even be able to do that? And would they even have capacity? How's that all going to work? Like, I don't know, I think, I don't know what year the last elementary school was built. Can someone tell me in the city of Versailles when the last elementary school was built? Was it South Side? Yeah, and that was 35 years ago. And I don't know what the population has increased in the last 30 years, but the population, I can tell you that the only people who live here are people who want to raise families or retirees. There are not any single people, really, I'm sorry, but it's just, they don't really exist here. So, that's really what you're looking at. And so, the people that would be moving into these homes would be people with children. And for the most part, because we, they would be kind of like starter homes, like, I think they said like 300 to 500 thousand dollar homes, which, you know, is insane for starter home. But it's, it's Versailles, it's one of the wealthiest counties in America. So, it's just the way it is. But, you know, you all probably knew my grandfather, many of you. He has been up here, sitting in those seats before, speaking to you all about proposed developments in the past because he has built neighborhoods here. And he was very proud of that. It took a lot of work and he was somebody who was incredibly highly respected in this community. And, you know, as hard as it was for him to get stuff built, you know, I just can't imagine what it's like for, for anyone else, so. But I, I'm not, like I said, I'm not completely opposed to the idea of this happening one day. I just think that there needs to be a harder look at the infrastructure. And do we have the schools? Do we have the water and electricity and all those things that are needed for all these changes? And is the traffic and the road, this highway that goes straight through town? You know, we have thousands of people that come through every day, through the Bluegrass Parkway, through Nicholsville, through Wilmore, because it's a straight shot. And that's, there's no other way for them to go. And that's the way they're going to keep going until something changes. So, if that can just please be considered and I thank you for your time.
John Abbott.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Abbott. I'm a resident of Versailles and live in the Legends. And I'm an honest person. I have to say that after everything that everybody said here, there's not much left to say. But I think there's a little bit of guilt because, you know, I live in the Legends and that subdivision was newly developed in this county a couple of years ago. And so, just being completely honest, I do feel that. But I'm here in opposition of not the community or not the residential bill. I'm here in opposition of changing the zoning of that particular piece of property from agricultural to, to residential, high-density R4. You know, like everybody else's voices of concern with the traffic, I understand. There's been several traffic studies, I think you mentioned four, three, two. People have to understand what a traffic study is and I don't think that that entails what everybody in your audience is understanding about congestion and what happens if you kinds of travel there. But it is a problem. It's already a problem and it would absolutely become worse if that was on the R4 or really any residential neighborhood was built on that, that piece of property. I would, you know, we live in a great community. All of the folks that have come up here before me have talked about being born and raised here. I was not born and raised here, they've talked about how long they've lived here. You know, we're actively taken away from the beauty of not only the state, but this particular county. My wife and I moved here particularly for the school district and for the small-town feel with, with a location that gives us access to things that we want to do. We love the community, we love the people and we wanted to stay that way. And I feel like maybe we're peering away from that for unknown pressures that I don't professionally need to talk about. But, you know, I think we need to preserve that. And again, I'm in opposition of, I would challenge each one of the commissioners that are here to vote against this and I'm in opposition of it. Thank you.
Catherine Bishop.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Bishop. I've lived in Woodford County for 36 years. You may refer to the saying, "Not blind opposition to progress, but opposition to blind progress." I believe that's what we're discussing tonight and I am opposed to the, to the zone change. We're told that this property is inside the urban service area, but that just refers to a line on a map. Being inside the urban service area does not mean that every property subordinated is a good site for development. Many reasons have been mentioned tonight and I won't repeat them, but I am opposed to this zone change. Thank you.
Joe Gerwin. Gerwin, if I can pronounce that right.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Joel Gerwin, I've lived in Stow Ridge for 27 years. I'm opposed to the rezoning. I think there's an obligation here to the existing homeowners in the existing districts. If this zone is allowed, even with the restrictions that are being discussed on what could be done in the future with this particular one, to creating a, basically the camel's hook under the tent, you're going to have a precedent for other people that are going to want other properties to be zoned as a high-density as well in the midst of A1, R1A and R1B properties. I think the people that bought R1A and R1B properties bought them not just because of the house, but because of the neighborhood. And it is no secret that if you put high-density and lower-cost homes into the middle of these other homes, you're going to affect the property values of all of those homes. So I think I speak for the vast majority of the A1, the R1A and the R1B homeowners in South Versailles that were opposed to that impact on our property values as well as the density and the traffic. I, I count the cars at the entrance of Stow Ridge when I leave it in the high-density times of day. When I first moved here, it was two, three, four, five cars before I could pull out. I've gotten to 77 now. So, saying that the density isn't affecting the traffic or the congestion on Troy Pike is not factual. In 27 years, we've gone from two or three cars to 77 cars. So, without a traffic place, there's going to be a time bomb that will be able to get out of my neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to address.
Ann Richmond.
Hello, my name is Ann Richmond. I live in the South End of the county, now my county is here. I've lived here for 61 years, 75. And, um... And I would like to request that you deny this zone change. I personally oppose any zone change from agricultural to residential. That land is incredibly valuable, cannot be replaced. I'm also concerned about the water system, water, underground water systems. Our harsh topography is extremely vulnerable to contamination from runoff. It's been said that water will be a commodity of the twenty-first century, and we need to protect what we have. Also, I'd like to mention that just because you can do something legally does not mean that you should. And I think this is the case in court. I encourage you to vote against this, and thank you for your time.
Vivian Richmond.
She had to leave and take my grandson home to bed. That's a hard one, not many people get that right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for all the work that you've done to try to help the community understand what you want to do. And thank you to the board for your service to the community, because it's not an easy job that you have, and you can understand that. I have been in Versailles since eight-eight, have a very successful business that I've had over thirty-five years. So I live, work, and play in Woodford County. It's not someplace I find, just come to see. Raised a couple of children here, in this county very special. I think it's important that we not look at this development in a vacuum. There's been a tremendous amount of growth, as many people that spoke before have said. Sustainable growth must align with the infrastructure capacity. And our infrastructure capacity on thirty-three has not kept up with the growth. Since I've been here, I think all we've done on thirty-three is straighten the road and put an interchange in the progress on it, which increased traffic. So, until the, until the improvements are put into the Department of Transportation's plan, that we have funding and that they're implemented, I would request that you deny this development. Because I do think it's going to overwhelm our infrastructure. I did submit a letter, and you have it there in your package. So thank you very much again for your time, especially for allowing us to speak and stay in this, so I appreciate it.
Good evening, I'm Joe Johnson, and I'm a resident of Cedar Ridge. I'm also the president of the Cedar Ridge Homeowners Association. I want to thank you all for your patience, thanking Mr. Maloney for your process and working with the community. And definitely want to thank the community for taking the time to not speak of your convictions. I don't know if going towards the end is a benefit or not, but a lot of the things I had in my free page have to be X's and Y's by, because they have been thoroughly covered. However, I do have some points I want to make before I make two, speak to two opposition objectives. Number one is the outcome of the Simmons conversation we had, which I think was a very good process, very civil, on both sides. There were ninety-three residents there. But I do want to say the outcome of that meeting was opposition to zoning from A1 to R4. I do want to articulate, I want to make sure there's clarity here. I do believe green space that you see running north and south there is not an altruistic initiative. I think that is a required utility easement. So I want to bring perspective to that. I have built homes, I've renovated homes, and I will say this. Economically, you cannot build a decent, high-quality home for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. In Marywood itself, thirty of our homes go for a quarter million dollars. So we're not alleviating a lower-income housing shortage. We're just adding to the four hundred to six hundred thousand dollar home build outs. So economically, you know, from that perspective, it's not fair. Capacity right now, that's been clearly articulated. We have over two thousand two hundred present-day planted properties for livable space. You take the two-point X factor to that, that's clearly articulated, it's five thousand people. So, in theory, if it was all developed within this next couple of years, you're taking the population of the city limits of Versailles from ten thousand plus to fifteen thousand plus. Never in the history of Woodford County has that development growth taken place. As president of the HRA Cedar Ridge Homeowners Association, our drainage system currently go into three sink holes. Every rain for the past five years has created flooding. So, we are actually now going to increase the surface water runoff to enhance that flooding. That pond, as articulated, has a hand approach that road. I'd hate to see it similar to the condition at Williams Lane. I don't think it would be that bad, but we do have a water retention issue and a flooding issue in that road ridge, Cedar Ridge. Homes was developed on a flood plain, but they obviously have reconstructed it. I want to speak to the yellow signs, because I thought that was a nice KRS kind of initiative. Even I was like a little disappointed in the yellow signs. I think our initiative put out some nice signs. That does need to be a little bit bigger if this is going to continue on Woodford County. I will say, as a driver, a whole dry ridge, car speed, that speed limit is not maintained. So we're actually going to be putting more cars at areas where it speeds. That road, complete to thirty-three Troy, is a gateway to Versailles City. It's a historic, beautiful place. We're already congesting up, cracking up the other side entry to Woodford County downtown Versailles. Now we're going to be potentially, potentially good on the South Side of Versailles. South Side School has a capacity of six hundred and fifty students. And on April tenth, twenty-twenty-five, it is at six hundred and ten students. That only leaves forty slots. So addressing the concerns that people have articulated with regard to school capacity is a real concern if you consider the number of housing units. It's interesting, we all got our property taxes recently this, and as president of the HRA, I always get a lot of calls, I even get calls about product taxes. They've gone up. And this actually is my perspective, and I think other people in this community believe that this type of R4 density brings down home values. So there's a little opposition here, an unhealthy tension between increasing property taxes and potential perspective of property value going down. Besides, what I'm going to submit for record, I do have three other submissions that are on my behalf that couldn't be here tonight. One is a planning engineer retired land survey from Shart. I've got another one from Storebridge. And I've also got another one who is also, also an engineer from Cedar Ridge. So I want to enter these three, no, I'm not ready to enter. Into record and conjunction. My hot minutes? Me and I actually met, they can track and speak. Man, I cannot, thank you.
John Lauderdale. John Lauderdale.
Hopefully the evening's about over. I'm John Lauderdale, I'm happily. I am opposed to the rezoning, just with time and respect. Most of everybody's already gone over my whole list. So I'd like to present my letter for record.
Janet Huffman.
Second time, my name is Janet. I've lived on Troy Pike for forty-six years, and all my concerns have pretty much been that much. I definitely oppose the zone change and the high density.
I'm having trouble reading the next name. I know it's Michelle, the last name I'm having trouble with. Looks like it starts with a P. Yeah, looks like it starts with a P and has an I. That's, that sounds good, I'm sorry. Michelle.
It's Quillie Michelle, M-I-C-A-G-L-L-E.
Is there a Michelle that's signed up that's not spoken?
The last thing starts with a P, maybe.
It's not spoken, yeah. Okay, Kim Hanson, I got that. The next name is Sue Churchill.
I'm Sue Churchill, and I live on the front end of the council. My husband, John Quilpoint, we moved here to take care of the family farm. And we felt blessed to be doing so in a community that had always protected its farmland, protected its agricultural land, its green spaces, and its rural character. We both stand in opposition to this rezoning as a move in the wrong direction. Thank you very much.
Hey, this is all the names on the list. Is there anybody that would like to speak that was not on the list?
Hi, I just have a few things that we've not went over.
State of the game, please.
Leslie Snead, I'm representing Kentucky Resources Council. So for those that don't know, Kentucky Resources Council is a statewide public interest environment. I am just a scientist that works with them. I'm a senior scientist, not an attorney, so don't be nervous. I had submitted comments earlier today, you should have my maps and everything in there. Hopefully, if anyone has any questions about that at all, feel free to send me this email. I would like to just go over a few things about the on-site pond, which does have fringe wetlands all around that pond, and there is a spring. Neither one of those things were put in the application. And it's hard to tell, because the white on the west side of the pond, it's not, it's completely not transparent. But there's shrubs and trees all the way out into several of those lots, where they had went, and it's been hating, it's actively been hating for as long as maps existed. So the farmers have went around that area because they couldn't get any closer to it, because it is a forested-type wetland area. And I do want to say just real quick, whenever I say wetland, I don't mean the waters of the United States. That's not what I mean. I mean, it's your responsibility as the planning commissioner to look at your regulations and know that this functions as a wetland. It absolutely functions as a wetland, but as far as considered a water of the United States, it would not, most likely, I can't make that determination. But from the standpoint of Kentucky, because we just changed that through Sinneville eighty-nine, it also would not be considered a wetland, but it functions as a wetland. And that's why you all have, what was it, two hundred and sixty-three acres? Sixty-nine, two hundred and sixty-nine acres of watershed that flows into this pond area. And they were talking about the different seats and the stormwater parts that you put. In those two hundred and sixty-nine acres, it's all freshly been developed. There's probably twenty acres that is completely bare ground right now, because it's being developed. So have a look at that map and know the sort of ground that you're going to get there. So the spring, I gave you that from KGS. It's been on there, it needs to be protected. There's several, I mean, if you were going to do this property, it would need at least twenty less lots if you're going to protect that, that pond and wetland area. And also, I have a map too, that's on there, that shows the groundwater. So, when it goes under Dry Ridge Road here, it forms an intermittent shrink for about a thousand linear feet, going straight south. And then that goes into the groundwater. And that groundwater goes all the way over west. All of that groundwater is impacting your big horse farms. People who actually do care about groundwater out through, all throughout that way. So consider that whenever you're adding on. I don't think of one acre pond, that's what they say. It has maybe another acre of wetlands around it, can cover all of that acreage and plus all of this that has all impervious surfaces. And I think that's all. I didn't want to say, also, my name is Leslie Snead. Aside from Kentucky Resources Council, I do live in Woodford County. And I am single, I was single for three of the years. We do exist, but only, only because I called dibs on a house to rent ten years before I actually moved here. And when that guy moved out, I moved in, it's all burned down, my house is in the rubble.
Anyone else that would like to speak that had not signed up, ma'am, if you would like to come up?
Number one, feel good to stand up.
Hi, I'm Donna Dunman. I live here in Versailles, and I live right across the road from this proposed development council. You know, ideally, we would keep this as agriculture. I think we all like to flood our neighborhood and see big doodles or nice farmland. But on the other hand, and I know this is a parish people, most of the people here, I am really concerned about lack of housing for young people, or even retirees that want to downsize. So when the developer listen to us, and even though they're smaller homes from what we have, that they're trying to address that need, I applaud that, because they did listen. So whether it's here, or whether it's somewhere here in Versailles, Elsby, I did encourage either the commission to think about the public sits. Right now are just basically priced out of the market. So, I was kind of excited to see it, it's across the road from me. And I would like to see if it is whatever's built. It is horrible trying to get out anymore of Helmsley to turn left into town. So I know they've proposed to let Pam turn from town in, but if there's someone to make a lane, how I can pull out on, out on Frankfurt Road, going from Frankfurt where you can kind of stage it, that would be helpful. So thank you for your time.
No one? Mr. Shute?
We'll be brief. It's been a long night. We appreciate everybody's time, we appreciate everybody's effort. One comment really stuck with me tonight, though, was by a gentleman that talked about the guilt that he may have felt opposing a development like this. And I remember sitting where Henry's at tonight, and I remember listening to a lot of these people that are here tonight object to their neighbors coming in. The same people that are here objecting to this. It's just the way Woodford County is, it's been that way for a while. You're protective of the farmland, you're protective of the town. I appreciate that, and I can understand that. We'd ask that you follow the comp plan that's been in place. You all taking your time to put that in place. It calls for residential here, it calls for this type of development, so we'd ask for approval tonight. Mr. Maloney would like to address just a couple of the issues that we'll raise tonight as well.
Good evening, my name is Janet Haldani, who's vision engineering. I'm the manager of this property, as well as the engineer. I just want to thank you, everybody, thank the audience, thank everybody that contributed with their input into the meeting we had with the neighbor, because of their input, we're able to change this layout to this single family. Just want to give a very brief idea why we came up with that layout. So the way we were envisioned is basically, we want to have, this is going to be as a gateway to downtown. We felt that having downhouses with some brick and some kind of natural material would be a nice way for the gate, for the, toward the downtown, instead of having the backyard of this house is backing into Troy Pike. So, and that's, this is where the idea of downhouses came in along the front. And then we want to have the backyard, basically, kind of, the backyard toward the green space, which is a strip, it's a hundred feet of green space, of easement, electric, overhead electric easement. And the reason of the connection between Prairie Rose is because Prairie Rose has been been connected to the edge of this property, so we felt extending it to Troy Park would basically create another exit for the Cedar Ridge and Rose Ridge and this neighborhood in the back, which is will be total total of 359 residential units based on one entrance and one exit. If you look at any fire code or any safety, the maximum you are allowed is to have either federal law or state law is 100 unit can be on one entrance and one exit. So that would add another entrance, so there will be two entrances into this subdivision. And then on the pond itself, so, and we are proposing eight feet of sidewalks that run along the extended road, and that sidewalk is that kind of serve if kids want to go to school or something like that, it's wider sidewalk, or somebody wants to go downtown, there will be an access toward the, toward the main road, and also we're proposing to have eight feet along the main road as well. And on the pond itself, the pond is, the surface area is of 75 acres. We are creating almost two acre of buffer around it to accommodate for any drainage coming from the side. And then the closest property line to that, to that block will be 100 feet, so creating 100 feet of vegetative buffer between the pond itself and the back of the property line. And that's two of this drainage area can drain into the pond, which is include drainage area coming from Cedar Ridge, from Rose Ridge, and from the school, from Lucrez Parkway, and also 63 can drain into that area. So we are on the downstream side of this subdivision, and between all of these, this is how we came up with that layout, based on the neighbors and neighbor, we don't want apartments, we decided to restrict it, no apartment on the side. We decided to cap it to 85 units, and the reason for townhouses is just we did not want any backyard toward one of the main roadway background, and basically this is how we came up with that layout. And the reason we went for R4 zone because it allows us to go to having townhouses and single family, and giving the restriction between the pond and the buffer around the pond, and also the 100 feet easement, this is how we asked for R4 zone, which is our density is less, it's like three point eight units per acre. If you have any questions, let me answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close up here. Commissioners, we've gotten a lot of information tonight. Any thoughts, questions?
I've got a quick question. I know the car study has come up a lot tonight, and just doing some quick math, word about this may be out of the realm of what I even, there's a study even done for this, about 980,000 square feet on that 22 and a half acres right now, as it sits without anything built out. Once you build this out, I'm estimating that 1,200 or 1,500 square foot homes, 85 units, 60,000 square feet of road improvement and sidewalk improvement, so you're looking at about a quarter, a little less than quarter of that property being built out with hardscape or, or residential builds. Have you looked at that to see what runoff? I mean, obviously, we do know that there is a significant amount of runoff, and that is a concern for us. I know we had a horrible flood just here recently, which I think has brought that to everybody's mind. But in saying that, do you have any idea of what impact that this will have?
So at the development, development plan stage, the final development plan, construction plan stage, we will have to submit those numbers to your all's engineers. If they don't meet Mary Beth's, and she can be rigorous, if they don't, if she doesn't agree that they meet the requirements, you don't build. So there's, that is always on the back.
Anything else from the commissioners? Scott, do you have any response for the concern about the quality of the homes that you all proposed and being able to fit within that price range that you also have suggested, like the 250 range?
You're asking whether or not we think we're going to be able to build it for that price range.
Yes, thank you for fixing my question.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that I wasn't trying to rephrase it. But yeah, we're confident that we'll be able to build it at that price range.
With the materials that you indicated in your...
So the materials indicated are for townhomes. That's, that's one of the conditions that we're willing to put on there is guaranteed because that's the, what we do as kind of the entryway scenic look, and so we want those, we want you all to be confident to know what the back end of that will look like coming into town.
I have some infrastructure questions that I just can't seem to get in my mind right this morning. And I have to say, by some of the things, they brought our attention about the infrastructure, about different things, and considering we've had questions about infrastructure lately, a little bit, I'm just not, I'm not sure I can be comfortable with it.
So are you suggesting that we take the information we've gotten, Kim's gotten a lot of information tonight, and review it ourselves and bring this back up at the next meeting?
That's what, that's what I would suggest this week. I mean, anyone else feels different?
Any other commissioners have thoughts on this?
I have a question. Is the main reason for the R4 is because we want the townhomes and is, is the argument that if...
The Shire would, would have been R4 or R3.
Right. If we took out the townhomes and we just went with regular homes, it would still have to change from agriculture, obviously, but the argument here seems to be so heavy against R4.
And I think that's the misconception. So they, you hear R4 and it's tagged high-density residential.
Right.
That is a high-density residential development. That is less than four units per acre. That is in line with your single-family residential unit per acre. So I get the concern, and you hear high-density, you think that, but it's really not when you see the proposal, the density caps that we're providing. So I get...
And you, you're willing to put density caps, the density cap will be on the plan?
Yes, yes. Sixty-two single-family, 23 townhomes, like I said in our original presentation, I wouldn't be shocked if the 62 comes down just because of development practice counts. Meaning it will never go over 62, but it could come to less.
There's, there's been some questions on the traffic study. There's been, there's been some doubt from some of the members of the community. And...
The easiest question.
The, I'm sorry?
I said, the easiest way I can explain it to you is, is when we sign our paper, we have Rule 11 obligations. Engineers have the same obligations when they stand the traffic impact study. And what that shows is it takes level of service to that. And it says, if we build this out, will it impact the level of service? And the traffic impact study, based on the engineering numbers, says that.
The assumption is that we're... I'm just addressing a question.
That would be huge, Mike.
With the applicant right now. Thank you.
So I just hope we're not at a point where we, we can just, without presenting a, I've not seen a traffic impact study that comes to a definitive conclusion. And so if we can present one that says your numbers and your assumptions are incorrect, then there's a discussion, but otherwise, we're just saying we disagree with some.
I would make a motion that we table this until the June meeting, as we've, we've heard a lot of information tonight, we've heard a lot of, a lot of members of the community, we've heard a lengthy presentation from the applicant, so that's what I base my motion to table this until the June meeting.
Second motion.
Motion and second, any further discussion on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, our bylaws favor closing the public hearing and reopening it only for very specific and kind of drastic stated reasons. So first want to clarify whether that's part of your motion to close the public hearing.
I do close.
Okay. And then, I, one thing I wanted to have in the record was, Steve, can you speak to notice and onsite notice?
The notice requirement.
You mean the criticism of the signs? Yeah. I mean, they meet the requirement, they're, again, you heard mentioned, the zoning change stuff has to be three inches, all the other letters are one inch in size. There's nothing in state law about the size of the sign, but signs need to get bigger, those are typical sizes, but we need to make them wider, but the letter heights we require them. We put them out at 14 days prior, and then when the last hearing was tabled, we took them down, we changed the dates, put them back out, and you know, I've done this a long time, like a lot of people have lived it a long time, I've done planning and zoning a long time. And I do think it's interesting, a little bit of critique about the signs is fair, but then to get up, say, the signs are too small and the rooms packed, obviously some folks saw the signs, they saw the number, they called. Say they didn't work, I disagree with that because I answered a lot of phone calls, but folks said they saw the signs. So the letters are better that we send out, we also send adjacent property owners letters, Kim sent them out twice, I think the number was 80-something? Eighty, she sent those twice, that's requirement in state law. We did those 14 days prior, and then the third leg of the notice requirement in state law is we have to put an ad in the paper, which we did twice. So twice in the paper, signs out during the timeframe, and the letters went out twice, which meets the requirement, in our opinion, in Paris 100 to something.
Thank you. I want that to be unambiguous. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to delay this till the June meeting. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for a vote on favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
For the record, I've never seen a bunch of officials on business.